Sunday is not Wednesday. But I've had a lot of students enroll. In Hillman Talk University. And it seems like they're new. So if you are new at dosage calculations. This session is for you tonight. If you're old at it too, then yes, you can still stay. But this is gonna be focusing on the easier beginner concepts. The metric conversions and what you need to be successful. So. Y'all double tap in and tell me what program you're in, please. And if you will, share the live. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Hello, good evening. Hey, alright, so. I'm Nurse C, a blessed R N. How y'all doing tonight? I'm pretty sure you seen this pop up and you're like, ooh, dosage calculations. Yes, dosage calculations. So, um. By participation in the chat because this is a very interactive life. Um, I need you to talk to me so I could talk to you. Because I've been a nurse for fifteen years and I'm trying to help everybody out. Uh, and that's just what it is. So I can't help you unless you help me. What is your biggest problems with dosage calculations? Um, this is a user, um, not a user, a beginner friendly session. So, yeah, Brooke, your brain hurts. What happened? What was on it? Converting, okay. We'll do some, we'll do a lot of that tonight. So I normally host sessions on month, on Sundays and Wednesday nights, but it's like over everything. This session is like focusing on learning your conversions and converting, um. From metric to metric, household to metric, how to set up your problems, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, so. Hey, Mar, how you doing? Deciding how to set up the equation with the information dimensional. Boom, okay, you stay right here. You stay right there. Okay, so. I know when you start school, they give you a chart and it's got all kind of stuff on it, right? It's only a handful that you really gonna use, starting with these. So if you don't know your metric conversions, that's the first place to start. And I'm gonna show you an easy way to how, um, of how to remember it. I've also got a video that's already made on my YouTube channel. Um, this is not streaming on my YouTube currently. But, um, afterwards, I'll see about uploading it so you can watch the replay. But. You need to know these, the kilograms, the milligrams, the grams, you know, all of the King Henry died things. Yeah, if you look and you break stuff down into sections. And I take everything together at once and see patterns and correlations is easier. So the way that I remember how many grams are in a kilogram, how many milligrams are in a gram, how many micrograms. Are in a milligram is that I use cookies, okay? So if you have the gram, that's your base unit. Uh, the base unit could be the a meter, a liter, a unit or gram, right? If you have one base unit, so we're gonna use grams for this example, that's your one cookie, okay? One cookie is one gram. If you chop that cookie up into a thousand pieces, you get crumbs, right? A thousand crumbs come together to make one cookie. So one gram is one thousand milligrams. So it takes a thousand milligram pieces to come together to make one gram. If you pick up one of those crumbs and you crumble it down, smush it even more to kind of residue and dust. Then that's your micrograms because those are what? Micro sized pieces. So one thousand micrograms is one milligram, then one thousand milligrams is one gram. Then if you go to Costco's or Sam's, I don't know if y'all boy kinda not, whatever, that's your business. But you want a big hole, big, just big back size thing of cookies. You got a thousand one gram cookies in one kilogram. So you see, all of those. Are separated by the factor of one thousand. So does that kind of make sense on how to do your grams, your kilograms, your micrograms, your grams? They're all separated by the factor of one thousand. The one is always going to go by the biggest unit of measure. Okay? Good? Alright, so let's see what else we got here. And I'm using pages out of my book. The puzzle piece approach. So let's look at this. Let's do some metric conversions. Metric conversions. So when you're setting up your problems, I use the puzzle piece method, okay? So. We're not doing math. We're putting together a puzzle. When you get a puzzle. That puzzle comes in a box with a picture on the outside. That's what you want your equations to look like, okay? So we're not doing math, get it out of your head. Math is very intimidating. So Mar, you can go to my website, A B R N. Hold on, is it on here? Let me see. Hold on, hold on. Boom, right there. You can find it in my workbook or you could find it on my website. The workbook is all pretty and cute and got it like that. The website, it looks a little bit different, but it's the same. I don't see in the chart provided. Which one? So, the picture on the puzzle box is what you want your equation to look like. That's what we're going to be doing. Piecing information like your metric conversions. Things that equal to each other, like the concentration of the medicine, um. The one that you gave us. It's not, oh, that one's not on there. So it's just. Yeah, it's, that's the one that's in the workbook. It's another one with the grams, kilograms and milligrams, but it don't look exactly like that one. Cause that one came from my book. Yay. Alright, so. Things that go together, go together, they stay together. Things that are single, are single, okay? So the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna read the question. The second thing is we're gonna find the goal. You always find what the question is asking for you to solve for. The goal. Is going to be what your equation needs to look like. Once you get done crossing out your units. AKA puzzle pieces, okay? So this is asking us for pounds. Okay, one of the golden rules or the golden conversions of dosage calculations is knowing that. One kilogram is equal to two point two pounds. So you see how I wrote that? That equals to each other. They equal to each other, so they go together. The other piece of information that I'm using is fifty nine kilograms. It doesn't equal to nothing. We're trying to figure out what, how many pounds it is, okay? So it's just by itself. So you see the things that are together, they stay together. The things that are by themselves, stay by themselves. So the rule. Always start with what it is that you are looking for, okay? That's what this is, the goal. So I'm looking for pounds. What I'm looking for will be first and on top, okay? Cause your goals come first and you wanna come out on top. So that's not hard to remember. Always start with what it is that the question is asking you. Everything else that comes behind it will need to be canceled out. You cancel out puzzle pieces by having the same unit of measure on the bottom and on the top, okay? Alright, so if my goal is pounds, this is where the pounds are. Remember I said it has to be first and on top. So I'm going to take it and I'm going to flip it around, okay? So the pounds will be on top. My KG will be on the bottom. You see, I kept what's together, together. I just simply repositioned it, okay? Now, I have my pounds on top, which is the goal, but I've got kilograms. That's not a part of the goal. Anything that's not a part of that picture, that goal has to be canceled out. So now I could put this puzzle piece right here on the top and cancel it out. So fifty nine kilograms. I'm gonna put whatever it is that's by itself, single, one, one is single, right? That one is gonna show you that that goes in that top line of numbers when you multiply and divide, okay? So now you see that I cross out my kilograms and the only thing left is what it is that I'm looking for. Which are pounds. Does this make sense so far? Cause this is how you're gonna do all of your problems in dosage calculations. There are a couple of exceptions that have formulas. But this is how you set up mostly all of your problems with dimensional analysis, okay? So now that all of my units are crossed out except for what it is that I'm looking for, I'll multiply across the top. Multiply across the bottom, then divide the top by the bottom. So it's gonna be two point two times fifty nine. Equals a hundred and twenty nine point eight pounds. Now I seen a couple of people get that right already, okay? So let's do some more. Hey, everybody who's came in, I'm a blessed R N. Um, I've been a nurse for fifteen years, started out as a pharmacy technician, L P N, R N, B S N, okay? And, uh, yeah, we can do some rounding tips thrown in here too. This is a kind of beginner friendly session. I do regular sessions on Sunday nights and Wednesday nights that go like with, um. Weight, weight based problems, um, IV drips. Fluid volume maintenance, all that stuff, okay? So if you're looking for some of the harder problems, that's gonna be Wednesday night. That's gonna be Sunday night. This is for the newbies to try to get you acclimated and caught up, okay? But if you want, you can still stay. Cause I'm going over the way that we're gonna do all of those problems essentially, okay? So boom, we got another problem, right? We got two hundred sixty pounds equals how many KGs? So our goal is to find out how many KGs there are. Eight P M Central Time. I've got an event that I created, so you can click on it. And get the notification because some people who follow me say they got the notification late. I don't know. Alright, so what are my puzzle pieces? I know that one kilogram equals to two point two pounds, okay? And I've got two hundred and sixty pounds, not two whole six, two hundred and sixty. That needs to be converted. Alright, so what am I gonna start with? I'm gonna start with what it's asking me for. My KGs, they're already on top, so I'm gonna keep it right there. So one KG is two point two pounds. Now. I got the goal. Pounds are not a part of the goal, so I'll put those on the top so that they can get cancelled out. Boom, boom. So now two sixty divided by two point two. It's gonna be one eighteen point one eight, one eight, one eight repeating. Alright, so rounding. When you round, you want to start at the place that it tells you they want it to round to. So let's say it asks us to round to the whole number. So we've got this number right here. The whole number is everything to the left of the decimal, okay? So if I'm looking at, um, rounding through the whole number, I wanna go one decimal place to the right. So that's gonna be the tenth place right here. If that number is four or below, it's a no-go. That number that we're rounding to will not change, okay? But if it's five or more, then you would raise the score. Okay, so if it's over that halfway mark, which is at five or in above, you bump it up. So this one would be one eighteen if we round it to the whole number. So let's say if we round it to the tenth place. You start at that place that it tells you that they want you to round and then you go one decimal place to the right. That number is an eight. So remember, it's five or more, so we raise the score. So that will be one eighteen and the only place that changes is that place value that it's telling you to change. And it'll go up just one. And then the rest of it is gone. You only want that place value left, okay? And we'll do some more rounding practice on these, um, on these questions, okay? Let's see here. Alright, so zero point three liters equals how many milliliters? Alright. Y'all let me know what program of study y'all are in. L P N, R N, B S N, accelerated. What you got going on? You can take a screenshot. I don't mind. I look decent tonight. So you can take a screenshot. Um, and y'all keep in mind that, uh, I do, uh, come on Wednesdays and Sundays at eight P M. Central Standard Time. I have a YouTube channel with all of this stuff already on there. This is just kind of like an interactive study session, real laid back. It's just us. Um, but if you do need some quizzes for practice, you can go to my website, A B R N tutoring. That's in my bio. If you need private tutoring, it's in my bio. If you wanna study with a group of up to five, which will be cheaper, it's in my bio. So, hey, hey. Alright, so now. We're looking for milliliters, right? So we know our puzzle piece has to be the. Value that has to be converted. And now, how many milliliters is in one liter? Remember the, the puzzle, not the puzzle, the cookies? How one gram was one thousand little milligrams? So one liter is what? One thousand milliliters. They are all separated by the factors of thousands. Uh, when it comes to the gram, milli, micro and kilo, okay? So one liter is one thousand milliliters. So what am I going to start with? I'm always gonna start with my goal. That's what it is that I'm looking for, okay? So I'm gonna take this puzzle piece right here and shoot, flip it. One thousand mls is one liter. So how am I able to flip this and it still be mathematically correct? Alright, so check this out. Remember we said that we're using puzzle pieces, right? So in real life, you have puzzle pieces in a box. They fall out the box and you're trying to piece them together to make the whole complete puzzle, right? But you have to place it and reposition it and trying to see how they fit. But no matter what re, uh, position that that puzzle piece is in, it's still that puzzle piece. It's just repositioned. This is the same concept, okay? So you're able to flip your puzzle pieces. And it's still one thousand milliliters equally one liter, okay? So now I've got the goal, so I'm looking for lead, um, liters to cancel out because. Leaders is not a part of my goal. So that's this one, zero point three liters. And because it's single, it'll go over one. And then I'll multiply one thousand times zero point three. And that's gonna be three hundred milliliters. You're welcome. Okay. Oh, Jen, you passed. Congratulations. Alright, so your B S, B S N's accelerated, L P N's. Um, the last one. Okay, I'm sorry, I don't know. The last one, I'm not sure. Definitely following and joining. Okay, cool. Glad to have you. Glad to have you. Yes, you can come back and you could be like Jen and we can clap for you too. You're welcome, Jen. You're welcome. The nurses are coming, y'all. The nurses are coming. Alright, let's continue on. So once again, my disclaimer for tonight, if you have been a part of my lives, this is a very begin, beginner friendly. Session here tonight, um. And yeah, we're just getting our feet wet and going into the basics, breaking it down. Veronica, uh, and Ni, by Nicholas. Yes, it is dimensional analysis. But it is not the mathy math dimensional analysis. We don't do math here. We solve puzzles, okay? Oh, thank you. Thank you, Jen. You're so sweet. I appreciate you, ma'am. I really do. Alright, so look. Again, what are we gonna start with? What is this question asking for me to solve for? The goal is. Microgram, right? Okay, so now we know that one milligram. Equals one thousand micrograms. That's why it's super important for you to understand those concepts. Of the metric conversions, alright? And then we have six hundred seventy milligrams that need to be converted. What? I'm gonna see who's been paying attention so far. What am I going to start with for my equation? Y'all let me know in the comments. What am I gonna start with? I'll do that one next for you beautiful invisions LLC. Exactly. Alright, so if I am looking for micrograms. I always start with my goal. If you start with what you're looking for, you don't have to go and find it. Everything else that comes behind it will have to be canceled out, okay? Alright, so we've got one thousand micrograms is one milligram. Exactly. Boom, that's the goal. So now we have to get rid of our milligrams, right? So six hundred seventy milligrams over one. And now we are just left with micrograms. So how many zeros is that? Three? Boom. What? Okay, wait, wait, wait. Y'all going too fast. Can you, can we go through how many milligrams would a patient receive in twenty four hours? Sabrina, um, Abakar. I do those typed on Wednesdays and Sundays. This session is just a real easy breezy kind of beginner friendly, going over conversions, going over simple concepts. Um, tomo, not tomorrow, tomorrow's Tuesday. I forgot what today was. But Wednesday, I could definitely do that type of question. Um, I have a question that I'm stuck on and you got a dosage exam tomorrow. What you got, Cammy? What if it does, if what if it doesn't, what if you don't start with your goal? Will that change your answer if you switch the places? So if you don't start with your goal, cause a lot of people say, well, I like to start with this, I like to start with that. It's just a different method of getting to what you need to cancel out and what place that they're have, that, that it has to be in. I like to start with my goal because if you start with what you're looking for, you don't have to go and find it. You can easily leave out a conversion if you don't. And then when the method that I use with the goal and the puzzle pieces. You see every step that you have to take and you make sure that you cancel it out. So people say, well, don't you need a second method to kind of double check yourself? No, because you see exactly the steps that you need to take. Alright, let me see what y'all say. Oh my gosh, yay, thank you so much. You're welcome. Do you have to simplify your final answer? What if it had a decimal? You always, um, you do whatever the rounding rules of your institution, your professor, A T I Hesse tell you to do. Um, so if it had a decimal, it tells you to round to the tenth place, round to the tenth place. If it was telling you to round to the whole number, round to the whole number. You gonna be back Wednesday, Denise. I'll be on at eight P M Central Time, Central Standard Time, okay? Alright, Cammy putting her stuff in here. Alright, Cammy, we won't, we gonna, we gonna save it for a little bit because this is the easy peasy. You came in with a full fledged drop per minute question. One of the ones you said divide, how do you know when to multiply versus divide? I'm not in medical, you just learned it. Okay, Jessica. So what we are going to do is we're going to use the units of measures that are by the numbers to set up our equation. Once our equation is done and it looks like this, where only that unit is not canceled out. All of your numbers are going to be in place so that they can be multiplied and divided. So once the equation is completed, you multiply your numerator. Alright, come on, let's be back. Okay, you multiply the numerator and that's a number. You multiply the denominator. That's a number. Then you divide the numerator by the num, denominator. So the numbers on top, multiply. Numbers on the bottom, multiply, divide the top by the bottom. Can you just multiply six seventy by one thousand by using the metric line? Yes, you can, but you know what I mean? I don't like, I don't like memorizing formulas. I don't like using metric lines. I don't like thinking about anything like that. If I know that one thousand micrograms is one milligram, I'm gonna set up my puzzle piece and it's gonna put it in place for me every single time. It's just an easier way. But if that's the way that you prefer and that you're comfortable with, absolutely. Um, okay, you, yeah, stoichiometry is in chemistry and I didn't like dimensional analysis when I was in school, but now I would, I swear by it. How about zero point zero two two liters to M C L? Is that micro liter? Do they have those? Okay, I've been having hell of trouble with these. At what time will this infusion end? Oh, yeah, you had a real big, big one, Cammy. We gonna save that one for Wednesday. Or you can, um, send it to me. D M that one to me. I have to show you that. This is, this is the beginner friendly one. This is what I'm scared of in nursing school. Math be frying me. Erin, this way you use little to no math, okay? Just stick around with me for a second. Come back and study with me on Wednesdays and Sundays. You'll see that it's very easy when you put it as a puzzle. And not look at it as math. Um, I do dimensional analysis on Sundays and Wednesdays, Casey. I also have a, um, YouTube channel. And all of my videos there are in a playlist with the puzzle piece approach, cause that's what I'm doing. The puzzle piece approach is my approach. On dimensional analysis to make it a little bit easier. So my name on YouTube is A Blessed R N. All of my streams, this one is not set up tonight, cause I just came on. I was like, I got a lot of students. Who are looking into, um, look, you know, getting into dimensional, so I came to do a beginner friendly session. But all of my other videos and replays are on my channel. Thank y'all for liking and sharing it. Okay, um. Watched your dosage count piece the other night and passed with a nine to eight. Look at you. Congratulations. Yeah, um, I have it linked in my bio. Um, it's two P sessions that I did live sessions on with just heavy, heavy P's. And those two are linked in, um, my bio, on my link tree. That is what's up. Congratulations. You're welcome. At Wednesday at eight o'clock P M Central Time. Big to small, multiply them all. That's how I remember. I say little, large, left, mic to slight, right. If you just wanna move the decimal, but hey, whatever gets you by. Uh, well, thank you for the follow. I'm, I'm glad you're gonna stick around. Stick with me. I passed with a one oh seven and dusty. Oh my gosh, you see, these are some of the people who study with me, so I'm excited. Do I have Hepburn practice questions? I have a whole quiz on my site with Hepburn problems. And then of course in my workbook, it's like over three hundred plus problems of like all kind of stuff. Um, mm, mm, mm. Okay, we see converting from pounds to kilograms. Yes. Cause somebody was asking me, can I convert, um. What can I convert? Let's do this. Like pounds and ounces to kilograms, okay? Alright, so what was that? I gotta scroll up. Somebody asked me. About that pounds and something. Hold on. Okay, six pounds. And three ounces equals how many kilograms? Alright, so we know that one kilogram equals two point two pounds, right? And we know that one pound equals sixteen ounces. You don't see a conversion that has pounds and ounces together to go to kilograms, do you? No, so in this case, you, um, you've gotta do like a two point, a two step. So this, this pounds needs to be convert, I mean, these ounces need to be converted to pounds. Then you'll add it to your other pounds with your, with your light terms and then you would do K Gs. So the first goal is gonna be pounds. So we have three ounces that need to be converted and we know that one pound equals sixteen ounces. If we're looking for pounds, we start with the pounds on the top, right? So one pound is sixteen ounces. We've gotta cross out our ounces, so we're just left with the pounds. And we put our ounces over one because it's by itself. So that means three divided by sixteen. I don't know what that is. Zero point one eight seven five. And that's pounds now. So now we've got six pounds already. So we just add these all together. So that is your weight in pounds with the ounces included, okay? Now we can do. The goal of K Gs. And you have your one kilogram is two point two pounds. Times your six point one eight seven five pounds over one. And then your pounds cross out. Alright, let me see what y'all been saying. What's the best way of memorizing or learning conver, uh, conversions? Ask, ask twenty five her. I'm gonna tell you in a second. This was one session I did with her and passed. So yes, she is the truth. Oh my gosh, thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Will your course start with the basics of understanding word problems and solving? You said, yes, Angel, um. We are doing, um, Angel, I said Angel, my bad. Uh, it's been a long day. Um, we're doing like a beginner session tonight. Usually I do harder themes and more in-depth questions on Wednesdays and Sundays. Of course, I also offer private tutoring sessions, um, in small groups. So, um, but tonight was just kind of a, a conversion, memorizing conversions. Doing, um, conversions and like tablets and such and setting up the problems. Because a lot of people don't know where to start when it comes to setting up your problems. where to start when it comes to setting up your problems if a plane is traveling three hundred miles per hour how long will it take to travel eighteen hundred miles that's interesting so let's see you see we're looking for what three hundred miles per hour we trying to see how long will it take so our goal is gonna be time so we're gonna see how many hours so if you got three hundred miles per hour and it's going eighteen hundred miles you're looking for hours right so hour three hundred miles at the bottom your eighteen hundred miles over one your miles crosses out so eighteen hundred divided by oh three hundred so it's gonna be what six hours that's how long it'll take dimensional analysis you using it in um chemistry you use it in aeronautics you use it every in every 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 facet every place I graduate this year LBN to RN Bridge and I already applied for your BSN okay come on congratulations oh yes you got an A real good girl congratulations you're welcome how about pounds to calculate the BMI I gotta look up to be in my formula I told you I don't like memorizing formulas I know BSA formula but I'm not sure but what the BMI formula is I have to look up that one cuz I don't do a lot of those yeah alright so a easy way to remember your conversions okay so we already went over the gram the milligram the microgram and the kilogram right you know your base and you can use it for liters meters and units okay so one is gonna be your base unit your base unit is always gonna be the gram the meter the liter so one cookie is your base unit if you break that cookie down into one thousand pieces a little crumbs you get a milligram if you take one of those milligram crumbs and you break it down further into little residue micro pieces it's micrograms so you see one gram is one thousand milligrams it takes one thousand little crumbs to come together to make one whole thing so just like you got a crumb which is smaller right a thousand times smaller then you break it down even further in your microgram pieces so those come together okay and then if you go to Costco one big big back container of cookies has a thousand of your one gram cookies in it you see so one thousand one thousand one thousand one thousand that's an easy way to remember those you helped me pass okay Lynn look at y'all congratulations pharmacy technician thinking of nursing options definitely I was a pharmacy technician before I was at LPM it'll definitely help so I took the pharmacy tech course and learn this um and learn this will this be helpful heck yeah definitely you'll know how to say your names of your drugs and you'll know how to rock some dosage calculations I am a witness can you convert um one okay can you convert seventeen okay we don't use trailing zeros so this is what's called a trailing zero that is a big no no big no no in school okay that can easily be mis- uh construed as a hundred and seventy which is what ten times more than what you were supposed to be given so you always put a leading zero which is the zero in the front of the decimal never the trailing one okay um I'm gonna do that conversion for you but we talking about the other conversions on how you memorize them I look squirrel okay my ADHD don't kicked in alright so that was your grams meters liters all of that so your household conversions which are your teaspoons your tablespoons your ounces so household household teaspoon tablespoon ounce right so one 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 so the teaspoon goes on top of the table inside the ounce house so from small to big teaspoon is the smallest tablespoon is next and then the ounce and stop trying to answer my questions I am a math tutor I don't need your help alright so five fifteen thirty ml 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 five milliliters is one teaspoon fifteen which is three is your tablespoon then two tablespoons is your ounces which is thirty five fifteen thirty this one is a big one that's a big one so I'll remember five fifteen thirty and break this stuff up don't try to just cram 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 the household thingy you said thingy oh you are my people um the tea- the teaspoon goes on top of the table in the ounce house so that's how you know it goes from smallest to largest I need this because I keep losing my ti- my tablespoon so I have to use my teaspoon so fifteen so five fifteen thirty five then times about three that's fifteen times about two that's thirty so three two one blast off I don't know that's how my brain works I just share it with y'all you do with it with what you pay uh I also have like a um I don't know it's it's a little ratchet but hey it works for me it's a it's a video that's pinned on the top of my page it's OJ the juice man if you know you know alrighty I was supposed to be converting seventeen liters to centimeters cube too so let me remember that alright so then the rest of your households and I have this exact same video like this is just us studying together so if you wanna see the video where I already like write this out like this so you can uh remember it it's on my YouTube channel y'all A Blessed Art in all of this is um it's a whole dosage calculations basics playlist so to help you get started and then there's a whole playlist with the rest of it and then the replays okay yeah you're welcome alright so we've got cups so one cup is gonna be eight ounces this one is gonna be big for your intake and your output okay cuz you have to convert everything to milliliters so remember this one remember remember it remember it okay so if you have one pint that's gonna be two cups if you have one quart that's gonna be two pints if you have four quarts that's gonna be a gallon okay so two two and four two cups is a pint two pints is a quart four quarts is one gallon alright moving on so then we know about the weights the one pound is two point sorry one pound is sixteen ounces and then one KG is two point two pounds this one is a big one you will see it a lot in your weight based measurements um in calculations okay then you have your length and distance right so feet one foot is twelve inches and one inch is two point five four centimeters okay again the conversion sheets are on my website which is in link in my bio the the video of this is in my YouTube okay it's on my YouTube alright so somebody asked could I convert seventeen liters to cubic centimeters a cubic centimeter is the same as a milliliter they don't really even use CCs anymore that's what it's called a CC so this is going to be the same as a milliliter so seventeen liters equals how many milliliters alright so let's see who's been paying attention the goal is milliliter right we know that one liter is one thousand milliliters and we have seventeen liters that need to be converted what are we going to start with first is setting up the equation what is the goal hey Olivia Alicia how you doing exactly milliliter so that's this puzzle piece and we gonna flip it one thousand milliliters is one liter now I could put my liter on top in order to cancel it out so seventeen liters and remember it's single is by itself what goes together stays together what's single is by itself alright so boom one thousand times seventeen is going to be seventeen thousand milliliters which would also equal seventeen thousand CCs which is a cubic centimeter is it making sense to y'all so far I am so awesome I'm so glad to hear from you oh my gosh y'all got any questions so far remember I'm not doing the hard stuff tonight you have to come back eight PM on Sundays and Wednesdays this is just to kind of wet your whistle get acquainted to how I do it because the way that I do dimensional analysis is very different it's not like math like I said we're putting together puzzle pieces Cami I got you so you you your goal is always gonna go on the top left my goal is always gonna go on the top and it's gonna be first whatever the question is asking me because these are just single goals so sometimes it'll ask you for unit per minute microgram per kilogram per minute milliliter per hour so whatever is on top is gonna go first and it'll be on top you're amazing thank you god is good okay alright let's do some more conversions where in your bio is the conversion sheet it's in it's on my website so my website is in the bio and you have to quit click study sheets then convert let me see where is that uh study and quiz resources so this the website it's all pink and cute ain't it so yeah these are some of the quizzes and I'm working on some more quizzes y'all I had a whole workbook I finished I'm like worn out so y'all if you want the workbook it's available in um digital format and a physical format it's a nice big old thick book too it's cute see I mean and it's broken down yeah it's it's really cute I I'm proud of it I must say uh do I have heparin on there yup there's a heparin drip quiz on there too and then on the um quizzes they've got the videos linked to it I do offer one on one tutoring my schedule is up so the time slots are available but yeah if you go to study and quiz resources and you go all the way down you'll see conversion and formulas boom which video are you looking for La Rubia I'm gonna look for some more stuff we can do come converting let's see let's see let's see let's do let's get into some harder stuff uh with the conversions okay alright since we've gone over some of these conversions let's put it to the test the conversion video is um my channel my channel so this is my channel if you go on playlists and you see it says dosage calculations basics that one okay so we start that's where that one what we just went over that's that one see I was ready for you I was ready for you okay so let's do this ten cups equals how many milliliters alright so what's the goal milliliter right so we know that we have ten cups alright so what else do we know about cups we know that one cup is eight ounces okay then we know that we can go from ounces to milliliters cuz one ounce is thirty ml remember five fifteen thirty alright so what are we going to start with if it's asking for us to find milliliter what are we gonna start with this is a very interactive live we live on a mon- we live on a Monday supposed to be a Sunday should be on Wednesday it's be it's a beginner session it's a beginner session I had a lot of people from Human Talk in raw so I figured we have to catch up and get caught up to speed just just a little something something just a little something okay alright so exactly we are going to start with milliliters y'all are so right y'all listening and I like when you listen okay so thirty emails is one ounce you keep what's together together we've used this puzzle piece cuz like in real life when you use a puzzle piece you can only use it once right so now we are going to cancel out our ounces cuz we've already got the goal so we know that everything that comes after that has to go so I've got ounces at the bottom so what comes next what comes next eight ounces at the top you're absolutely right eight ounces over one cup because that is what equals to each other right so you cross out your ounces if you're not writing your unit of measure by your numbers you're doing yourself a great 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 disservice because that's where the juice is that's where the sauce is the math is gonna math once the equation has put the numbers in the place where they need to be you get there by using the units okay so now we have cup at the bottom what's our last puzzle piece what is it gonna look like where are we gonna put the cups on the top so that they cancel out and because it's just cups by itself we're gonna put it over one boom cancel out and now everything is canceled out except for the goal okay I passed my dosage course with a ninety one yeah congratulations you're welcome you're welcome oh I told you it wasn't gonna be bad with the puzzle pieces see you don't have to be good at math because we don't do anything itself for multiply and divide we keep what's together together we set up our equation and we just do the math at the end and it's just simple multiplication and division so it makes it less intimidating right alright so boom let's see how many milliliters is ten cups so we'll do thirty times eight times ten so that's gonna be two thousand four hundred milliliters hey Nurse Glamber alright y'all if you just started at a school I know you're not thinking about inclix but guess what inclix prep starts at the beginning at admission just like when a patient is admitted to the hospital discharge starts at admission so I need y'all to go and um follow Ms Nurse Glamber she goes live on Tuesdays and Thursdays breaking down those nursing questions you see how we find the goal here you'll find those question those clues about the question and how to break it down so that you will be successful on your nursing exams as well as the inclix once you graduate so go ahead pin yourself Am go 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 pin yourself go pin yourself let me go ahead and follow you yes Kaya thank you do you have any syllabuses I don't have any syllabuses this is not an official class I just have live um live sessions on Sundays and Wednesdays I offer I also offer private tutoring so whatever it is that you need to go over for whatever it is that you're on I do that as well but yeah I just do about ten eleven twelve I don't know y'all try to keep me hostage all night sometimes um questions and break it down but this is just a beginner session so if you're more advanced and and further on in the courses this one might be a little bit boring to you but Sunday nights and Wednesday nights we get it in we do weight based P safe dose range BSA fluid volume maintenance parenteral oral weight based microgram per kilogram per minute IV time completion drops per minute we do it all yes getting it in okay so let's do another one let's see I need a hard one I need a hard one let's see let's see what we gonna do what we gonna do no I don't like that one I don't like that one either I need a hard one Amber let's see all these are pretty simple I need something with a fraction or something in there that one's interesting you'll find one I know I got like so many problems and then I'm trying to like revamp my problems too so yeah eighteen pounds and eleven ounces equals how many kilograms alright y'all so what is the goal what are we looking for what is what are we trying to find I keep telling myself I can do it and that's and that's what it starts with it starts with a correct mind frame too many people say I'm scared I'm afraid what scared of numbers a calculator can it whoop you it can't so change your mindset I can do this I can put these puzzle pieces together I will defeat dosage calculations me and Nurse C are gonna get it in okay so exactly the goal is kilograms alright so we know that one KG is two point two pounds we know that one pound is sixteen ounces this is just like that other one okay we have to convert our ounces to pounds first and then we can go to KGs okay girl was in the live studying last week and needed a one hundred percent ended up getting a one hundred percent on the first love it love it love it love it see and you thought you couldn't get a one hundred I knew you could I believe in you you gotta believe in you okay so what we're gonna do is we're gonna do eleven ounces equals how many pounds first okay so our goal is gonna be pounds so we are looking for our pounds to be on the top and our ounces to be on the bottom then we have eleven ounces that need to be converted they cross out and so we'll do eleven divided by sixteen okay I appreciate your lives and everyone in here oh you're so welcome you're welcome I love it I love it alright boom zero point six eight seven five and that's pounds now so now we can do what combine like terms which is and our new weight is gonna be eighteen point six eight seven five okay now we can go from pounds to kilograms since we got everything in pounds okay so KGs we know that one KG is two point two pounds and then we have eighteen point six eight seven five pounds over one because it's by itself and then we'll do that divided by two point two which is gonna be eight point four nine four three alright let's practice some rounding okay what if this asked us to round to the nearest hundredth what would our answer be oh my god I had the worst time with this in class today oh man so thank you so much for this you're welcome you're welcome no you just you look I I didn't say what to round to but y- yeah yeah alright so boom if you're rounding to the nearest hundred you start at the hundred you go one decimal place to the right if it's four or below it's a no-go if it's five or more you raise the score so this is a no-go right so boom our answer would be eight point four nine if we were rounding it to the nearest hundred what if we were rounding it to the nearest tenth place what would our answer be oh thank y'all for um six K likes I appreciate it I didn't realize how many people came in boom eight point five KGs I think somebody asked me earlier um is this recorded and do I have replays this session well the sessions that I do on Sundays and Wednesdays are normally streamed to my YouTube channel so after we get done studying you can view it this one I have to download it and upload it to the YouTube cuz it's not streaming right now so it'll take a minute but they usually go at the same time and since we don't know the fate of TikTok they like to play in our face um I I was prepared so TikTok went away but I didn't so if it ever does go away again A Blessed RN on YouTube that's where you can find me okay y'all make sure y'all go subscribe if they ask for the whole number we would round to nine change that to an exclamation point because you're absolutely right started dosage count today it's so ironic to see you today love this thank you you're welcome Caitlin um y'all wanna try to use this in a sense of doing some oral tablets and capsules y'all wanna try it we've done a couple of conversions is everybody good with the conversions on how to set it up y'all look so funny yes yes okay okay let me see let me see what I got let me see what I got tablet questions what's that no I don't want that one okay wait a minute uh let's see cuz I'm giving y'all the answers hold on I got you I'm gonna find a good one oh yeah this is a good one I gotta erase my drop my my slides oh yeah this is gonna be a real good one we gonna see who's been paying attention okay alright boom let's see fail doses yesterday so need your help Alicia come study with me get a private session I'll definitely help you alright boom amoxicillin zero point two five grams is what's ordered by mouth that's what P O means every eight hours available is amoxicillin one hundred twenty-five milligram tablets how many tablets will the nurse give per dose alright put a one in the chat if you think you can do this put a two in the chat if you absolutely don't know where to start don't know what to do whatever put a one point five if you think you have some kinda idea and this is a no judgment zone nobody's gonna come to your house and knock on your door and tell you that you suck okay we are all learning here re- remember it's a beginner friendly session but I'm gonna show you the same way that we did those puzzle pieces for the conversions is what we're gonna use for all of these other problems okay boom alright so I see a mix of numbers alright so what is the goal we read the question so what is this asking for us to solve for what is it asking first things first what's the goal y'all uh huh tablets per dose okay so tablets per dose when you see that per that means it's a line right there okay tablet per dose and you always wanna make sure you get everything that it asks for because it could have asked you for tablets per day okay can I say what I think it is before you solve I don't care Mackenzie I'm still gonna solve it so you can have at it alright so what's ordered is zero point two five grams and that is one dose part of a complete order is the name of the medicine the amount for one dose the route in which you give it which is how it goes inside the body and then the frequency frequency is identified by this word right here every that tells you how many doses are in the day okay if this is asking you for one dose do you need to know about how many doses are in the entire day no you don't because zero point two five grams is one dose now let me pull out the puzzle I mean not the puzzle pieces the colors you want dose at the bottom cuz now we getting to these double these double goals right the top and the bottom don't you already have a puzzle piece with dose at the bottom so therefore you don't ne- need to know how many doses are per day so that's how you use your goal to kinda pick out your information and your puzzle pieces okay alright so what's available is a hundred twenty-five milligram tablets so there are a hundred and twenty-five milligrams in one tablet okay what are we going to start with if the goal has tablets on the top and dose on the bottom what are we gonna start with y'all it's Nicole I'm not doing desired over half times quantity um I am doing dimensional analysis I do these lives traditionally consistently faithfully on Sundays and Wednesdays at eight PM Central Standard Time okay so I see that we said we need the tablets on the top alright convert grams to milligrams I'm not converting Jack I'm going to let my equation do all of the work for me I believe in one calculation that's at the end and I believe in working smart and not hard keep that with you on your nursing journey save your back okay alright so I'm gonna put my tablet at the top right so one tablet is a hundred twenty-five milligrams alright we've used this now we've got the top goal dose is at the bottom so that's what I'm working towards next do I have milligrams to put on top of my milligrams to cancel it out no my ordered amount is in grams so I cannot put a gram on top of a milligram because remember a milligram is one thousand times smaller than that gram remember the cookie and the crumbs analogy yeah so therefore I have to put my conversion right here exactly so my milligrams will go on the top my grams will go on the bottom one thousand milligrams is one gram and now my milligrams cross out so now I have grams on the bottom it's not a part of the goal either so it has to go right so now I can use this puzzle piece zero point two five grams is one dose my grams crosses crosses out and my dose is at the bottom and now I have what goal law alright now I can do just one computation at the end so one thousand times zero point two five is gonna be two fifty one twenty-five times one is one twenty-five two fifty divided by one twenty-five is two tablets and that's that oh my god thank you I hate anything other than dimensional hate is a strong word I know that everybody everybody cannot get into dimensional uh no matter how simple the puzzle pieces are you know but everybody thinks different but for those who are not good at math who the numbers don't be numbering the math does not be mathing these puzzle pieces will get you there okay how do we know that zero point two five grams is one dose Michelle so the order is zero point two five milligrams of amoxicillin by mouth every eight hours when you have this strength right here unless it says per minute per hour per day per whatever it is always assumed that it is one dose that is the amount per one dose unless it indicates otherwise okay so that's the part of a complete order the fact that I just learned this today and farm and came across your live the F Y B be be F Y P in so far and thank y'all for ten K likes I appreciate it thank you for sharing the likes um it's y'all are doing your job and 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 the the nurses are coming the nurses are coming the nurses are coming oh man call me the Paul Revere of nursing I guess I was called the Eliza Mary Eliza Mahoney Mahoney earlier my god dimensional analysis is so hard it can be hard if you don't use puzzle pieces we're using a puzzle piece method and it kinda simplifies it y'all like these puzzle pieces so far if you like them drop a puzzle piece in the in the in the chat um okay thank you you're welcome you're welcome can you do a dosage count question these are dosage count questions um dimensional analysis is confusing to me I do it another way and and yes it can be if you um if you don't know what to start what's together and but when you start with desired over half because it is easy desire over half is is great it's quick is efficient but what do you do when you get to the stuff that's weight based or your critical drips when you have a drip that's going at fifteen milliliters per hour the concentration of the medicine is five hundred milligrams for two hundred fifty milliliters your patient weighs eighty-eight kilograms how many micrograms per kilogram per minute are you giving then it's just like what is the desire what do you have and if your math isn't mathing it'll take you all the way out so I I encourage you and you know that's what you gonna do to get by now cool but you might need to meet it depending on your programs questions I don't know if you're in LPN or um in RN but if you're in LPN and you um you bridge to RN they do get progressively harder because you do have your critical care drips that you have to um come across alrighty just took my first dosage cap today and made a one hundred one hundred this way this way is easiest for me okay cool Vicky no secret I like it too so same today was my first day in farm okay y'all congratulations on everybody that's starting your nursing school journey if you haven't told me so far um cuz we did starting you know people came in that's fine I ain't gonna put you out of class cuz you late or anything but uh just let me know what program you're in RN LPN BSN can you do a drop per hour uh IV rate okay so it would be drop per minute it's either milliliter per hour or drop per minute I will be back on Wednesday night at eight PM Central Standard Time so I made a live event so you can get the notification I come on Sunday nights and Wednesday nights at eight PM Central standard time cuz I'm in Alabama where are y'all from um that's when I do the stuff the like the stuff the stuff okay so tonight was just kind of a beginner session to try to introduce you to the puzzle piece method to try to get you familiar with the conversions encourage you to learn your conversions you see how that was so easy to just put in one thousand over one because you knew it versus trying to go back and forth with a chart learn your conversions that's what's really gonna help you be successful um so yeah on Wednesday night I'll definitely have some drops per minute and IV rate stuff can you do another one similar for medication skill check off that will have a med math question Luisa and Leah yeah let me find another one um I'm a pharmacy technician we just finished this lesson okay wood doctor I was a pharmacy technician as well before I was in LPN before I was in RN so yeah oh this one looks good oh man don't look at it close your eyes y'all close your eyes 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 okay alright you can open now this is gonna be real good because I'm gonna show you how you can figure out anything with what it's asking you with the puzzle pieces LPN Farm D Alexis come on Farm D titration Mia I'll do um a titration problem on Wednesday night I need to write it down to my already growing list hold on mm titration titration so titration just means changing the rate of the drip big word big word a lot of big words in nursing that makes it seem more overly complicated than what it is just like reconstitution reconstitution is adding um water well a liquid to a powder shaking it up and making it a liquid so you can give it to your patient that's it and you concentrate on the concentration of the medicine I do have a YouTube channel it is a Blessed RN I have all types of problems already broken down individually on my puzzle piece approach playlist so whatever you're looking for it's probably already there and the replays so the set the setup that we're doing on Sundays and Wednesdays the replays are there so yeah and then the link that's in my bio I have two videos pinned for the P E D sessions so I went real real heavy in P E Ds um twice so those sessions are there um me and Jakara Lewis I don't know if you've heard of her the math goat herself we were supposed to do a session in August she got stuck at the airport so I had to end up doing myself so if you're looking so uh for some decimals and some fractions that is in the dosage count um basics list so I got So I got stuff for y'all and then the website has the quizzes and stuff. Uh, RN graduating in March, okay. Toy toy, I'm I'm sorry, you snuck this one in. Yes, okay, but we're gonna do it. We're gonna break this down. I'm gonna stop talking. I am thirty minutes outside of Birmingham. Where are you? Hello, my major is CJ, but shoot, I might switch over meanwhile, just learning. That's okay. I welcome everybody here. It's interesting. It's a- actually can become fun once you know what you're doing. Okay, I'm in Mobile. Okay, congratulations. Shorty doo-wop. Um, do I have practice problems? I do have practice problems, um. On my website, it's in my bio, A B R N, like A blessed RN, okay? Tutoring dot com, okay? Just subscribe. Thank you. I do have pediatric problems. Oh shoot, we gotta pass. Go ahead on your first try. And everybody who passes their test, I want you to come back so we can celebrate you, okay? Um, okay, y'all got ninety. Alright, here we go. Here we go, here we go. Alright. So the order is fifteen milligrams by mouth three times a day, okay? Available is five milligram tablets. How many tablets will be needed for a ten day supply? Okay, so we are looking for how many tablets, right? Now you notice it didn't say per, it said four. Remember I said what per means? That means divide. So we're not gonna put ten days on the bottom, okay? That's gonna be one of our puzzle pieces. So we've got fifteen milligrams. Is in one dose, right? T I D means that there are three doses in one day. So we'll need that. How do you know that we'll need that? Okay, because it's for a ten day supply, so I need to know how many doses are in the day, right? So three doses is in a day. Alright, and then we have ten days that we're giving it for. And then our tablets are five milligrams per tablet. So how am I going to set this up? So if you're not mathy mathy, this is how you set it up, okay? Tablets, that is the goal. So that is what goes on top. You take it and you flip it, right? Flip it. Tablets. Over five milligram. Boom, boom. Now I have milligrams at the bottom, so I need milligram at the top. Toy toy, your teeth feeling better? Boom, boom. Now, we got dose at the bottom. I need dose at the top, right? So three doses is in a day. Boom, boom. Last, so we use that, we use that, we use that. Now I got day at the bottom, so I'll put days at the top. And it's by itself, so it'll go over one. Everything is gone now except for tablet, which is what you're looking for, okay? So fifteen times three times ten divided by five. It's gonna be ninety tablets. You're okay, Paradox. You're okay. It was a very impromptu um, session. This was a beginner friendly session. So Wednesday night, we we gonna get into some stuff, so be ready. Be ready, be ready. Any questions on this one? This was different, but I wanted you to see how the puzzle pieces be puzzling, y'all. You could use it for anything. Somebody asked me earlier about a airplane going however fast it was going and traveling this and yeah. Okay, explain why it's not thirty. Alright. So look, one dose is fifteen milligrams. And you give one dose three times a day, right? So in one dose, you would give three tablets. And then we know that there are three doses in the day, so that's gonna be three times three. Which is going to be nine tablets. If we want to know how much we need for a ten day supply, nine times ten would be ninety. So you see, if the math is not mathing for you, but you can put together the puzzle pieces, then you can still get the answer. I'm new, should start my program in the fall. Thank you for this. Oh, you're welcome. Kevin, don't click the near. I was like, how did that get pinned up there? Alright, yeah, that's my other dude. Well, Amber wasn't a dude, but that's her 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 partner. I call them the dynamic duo. So like again, once once I was talking about the Inklex style strategy in the question breakdown, that's who you want to go and follow. Kevin, the boot nurse, okay? He's gonna help bring it and break it down. Inklex prep starts at the beginning of school in fundamentals. It all, it also helps you break down those questions. So you know what to look for. It's not enough to know in nursing school, just like the content. You gotta know how to apply it and you gotta know what the question is, just like this. How we're finding the goals and giving the question just what it wants. You have to learn how to give the question just what it wants, nothing more and nothing less, so you can get those points and pass these tests, okay? Alright, you bet, Coco Chanel. Hey, hey, go ahead. Alright. So does that explain why it's not thirty and that it's ninety? Does that make sense? Any reconstitution? I can do reconstitution on Wednesday. This was a very, very beginner friendly, um. Introduce you to conversions, introduce you to me, introduce you to these puzzle pieces, see what these puzzle pieces be doing. The puzzle pieces are puzzle piece-ling, okay? And to, you know, get, give you that groundwork and to give you that homework, learn those conversions like tonight. Like yesterday, and that's how you are successful in dosage calculations. Um, can we do another one like this one? It was a little tough. I know, Michelle, it was. That's why I wanted to do it. Um, I'll create another one and I'll do that on a Wednesday. It's almost nine thirty here. Uh, I'm a little tired. I just came on to do like a little, little session session, so yeah. You're welcome, Demore. Um, I started nursing school in August. Okay, never too early. It's never too early. Desire over half times volume, so your desired over half would be uh, you desire fifteen milligrams. You have five milligrams in a tablet, so that's gonna be three tablets, but that's just for one dose, okay? You have, boom, three doses, so you would have to tap, times that by three. Which would be nine and then you have to times it by your day supply, which would be nine times ten. So you see, it gets a little funky with desired over half when you get into this type of things. Even though it was like a simple tablet oral problem, it got complex, didn't it, real quick? So that's why I always preach, um, this dimensional analysis. No, I hated it in school. It was confusing. I didn't know what to start, what to put the one at, where, what comes next. What are you doing? But that's why we're doing these puzzle pieces here. So we break it all the way down so you can know what to do and then stuff like this becomes easy peasy, puzzle peasy, okay? Hey. We thought we were done with calculations, then started today med surgery. We have a math exam Wednesday. It doesn't, it doesn't disappear. It does not disappear at all. I know in my classes, we had like at least five to six dosage calculation questions on all of our exams. I got those right and I knew my name was right. The rest of it, God led the way. Do you record these and where can we watch them? Yes, I do record these. Um, this one is not recorded. My YouTube channel is a blessed RN, a blessed RN. Um, it's all of my, all of my resources, my channels, my social media, all of it is linked in my bio. My workbook is in the bio, the the physical copy and the physical copy. All of it is in the bio. I start my accelerated program in March. That's what's up. Congratulations. That's what my nursing program teaches us. It's really complicated. It can be complicated when they make it like that. They make stuff overly hard in school though, but just come here. Just come with nursing. We gonna take care of it, okay? Boom. Um, do you do basic math to help with the H E C? For H E C and Ts, you need Jakara Lewis, J A K A R A Lewis, L E W I S. She has a, um, she's on TikTok and she has a page on YouTube. All type of math stuff there. That's who you wanna get. Um, you are blessed and thank you, Mama Of Four. Hey, lady, how are you? That is good. He blesses me to bless others. Awesome, thank you. You're welcome. Alright, you guys, so what I have on the menu for Wednesday is reconstitution, IV time completion, titration, IV flow rate, drops per minute, metric converts. Y'all want to see on Wednesday? Let me know or forever hold your peace. Is the H E C the same as N L N N E X? I have no clue. Let me tell you. I've been a nurse for fifteen years. I didn't have to take a H E C or a Ts. I took the ACT and did my prerequisites and that's how we got into school. So I know I don't look as old as how long I've been nursing. God is good. I don't look like what I've been through. So I'm not sure if that's the same. I forgive me on my ignorance on that one. I I don't know. Hey, the name is J A K A R A.